Ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30. I want to welcome all of you here to the city council meeting this evening. This meeting is a work meeting, and it is November the 5th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. The meeting is being held at the Council Chambers at 10 North Main Street in Cedar City. We're honored to have President Sean Store from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saint that he's the take president in Enix to offer the invocation, after which Mr. Fugel will lead us in the pledge. President?
Our most grateful Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity that we have to meet here tonight in this city council meeting. We're grateful for this wonderful community in which we live. We acknowledge Thee and Thy beloved Son and pray that we might strive to emulate Thy Son in all that we do and say. We're grateful for the staff that works diligently to make this city in which we live a wonderful place, and we ask for Thy blessings to be upon them and their families. We're grateful for the bounteous blessings that we have been afforded from Thee, and we acknowledge Thy hand in these blessings. We love Thee, Heavenly Father, and ask for Thy Spirit to guide the discussion here this night and offer this prayer humbly in the sacred name of Thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, President Store. Appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fugel, you had to be here anyway, but you did not. So I want to excuse Mr. Bittman this evening. He's had his mother passed away, so I'm sure he's up in, not Vernal.
Grantsville.
Grantsville. Anyway, he's doing that, so we express our condolences to him. Let's go ahead and have the approval, Mr. Phillips.
Oh, I am so sorry. I was thinking about what I was going to say, and I would move that we approve the agenda order for this work meeting of November the 5th, 2025.
Second.
I motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I certainly want to congratulate and honor those folks, our candidates for city office, and to recognize them. Mayor-elect Steve Nelson is here. Stand up, please, and we congratulate you on your win. Excellent. And then also on the councilman, Phillips is going to continue on, Pierce, for four more years, and that will be great. And then Councilman-elect Waldo Galan, and Waldo is here. Stand up, Mr. Galan, and he will take his place on January the 5th, I think it is. The first Monday of January, unless the first Monday of January is the first, is on a Monday, and then it's the second, but I think you're safe with the 5th. It is a Monday at noon.
Yeah, you'll get an email or text or something.
You'll get told a lot.
(laughing).
But anyway, I just appreciate, I appreciate all the council members, all the people who put the effort into this campaign. It was handled extremely well and like true patriots, and it was fascinating to watch and to see the ideas that each one came up with and ways to do their campaign and get the word out for themselves, and I think it's always a tribute to our democracy and to our great city. I don't, did you have a speech? Is that what you were preparing over there, Mr. Phillips?
No, I was just trying to remember the three things I wanted to bring up, but I've got them right there.
They're not have to do with this. You're not giving an acceptance speech tonight?
No, no.
Because I figured if you was, we had to start with Mr. Nelson.
No, no.
But I couldn't figure out where you were going.
He'll have his opportunity to be at the pulpit there.
No, great, that's great. So I would like, however, to give a moment to Renan. The signup process is closed, and it's been a little interesting today, so I'd like to let her tell us who is going to be on the, trying to get Tyler Melling's seat for two years.
Okay, so those filed to fill the vacancy are David Johnson, Elise Carden, Jaden Reardon, and Phil Schmidt.
Okay.
We will do that next week in city council.
And they'll come forward next week, correct?
Yes.
They'll give their speech, and then these guys will vote.
Can we ask them?
These guys get to ask them questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Oh, we're going to grill you, Mr. Schmidt, just be ready.
And just in preparation for that, just because I've never even seen this done before, how does, do we vote just in, out live? Do we do it via a ballot? Do we do, how do we actually vote?
The last time we did it, they did a ballot, but then you have to read it out loud because you have, it is a...
Has to go on record who voted for who?
Has to be on record, yeah.
We're man enough, we can do it out loud.
So you can do a ballot and then record it, but...
If we can't man up to what we vote for, then we shouldn't be here, so we can do it out loud.
Okay.
So that's fine, whatever you choose to do.
In the order?
But if you want a ballot, we need to know beforehand so we prepare it.
The ballot would allow, would allow, wouldn't allow influence. You wouldn't know what the others had done ahead of you.
Yeah, that is one way to do it.
Yeah, that's true.
I guess the only other question would be, do we want to somehow draw a number to see, or do we just, 1, 2, 3, 4? Does one, was the way one person vote influence the other people, I guess?
Well, that's the point they're saying about the ballot. It still would have to be read aloud.
Then you disclose how you vote.
Yeah, I mean, the other way to do it would be, we can do it out loud. We just draw 1, 3, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, and that's the order we have to give our vote in, and then that way...
You could do that, too.
But you're still influencing.
But I guess, yeah, you're still listening to other people's responses.
You're still influencing the process with your vote.
That is correct.
Whether you like it or not.
That is correct.
And so my personal opinion would be, let's just ballot it and then...
And then have to read who, what, once it's chosen.
Then you read your ballot.
Well, and depending on how it goes, this is a big decision for two more years.
Yes.
And I know no one wants this, and I'm not advocating this, but should we need more time to deliberate, we can call, we have till the 15th, correct?
Legally, yeah.
Yes.
I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, let's wait and see how the process works, and if there's a, if we're ready to do it, we're ready to do it. If we need 48 hours or 24 hours to contemplate, we may have to call a special meeting, come in and just quickly do it. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I want to lay out that that is an option, should we need to do that.
Correct.
That's all.
I think it's an action meeting, and we'll hear the candidates, and they'll each tell us what they want, and then you as a council can decide amongst you how you want to handle the voting.
Sure.
I would advocate we do it then, because I'll be back, I'll be gone again, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and likely we...
I think we'll be able to.
We'll probably be able to. I just wanted to make sure that legally we have that option.
And I think you narrow it down and then, I don't know, I don't remember how that before.
The only way, I mean, the only way you would narrow it down is you vote first, and if there's a tie, that would then follow the tiebreaker rules to narrow it down to the top two is typically how it's done. There's a way to hit top three, but that's probably unlikely under our scenario. So I guess you could do your first vote, and if you don't hit it, delay it a day or two, and then see if you can...
Well, I think there'll be five.
Politic between each other. Yeah, but you can still end up with like 2, 2, and 1, and still end up with a weird position, and then we'd use you as a tiebreaker. There are ways to even hit it where you can't do the tiebreaker, and it can be a bit messy if you...
Well, it actually gets to the point where eventually you have to do a game of luck.
Yes.
Sort, yeah, you have to either flip a coin or...
So highly unlikely, but they have a scenario pretty much to cover anything you can think of and probably more.
I think we'll be able to get to a conclusion. I'm not, I think we'll, I think there'll be a winner next week, so.
But I'll have the tiebreaker rules here just in case. We'll go through them if we have to.
Okay.
Good. There is a Chartway grand opening on the 10th, I think that's Monday, at 10:00 AM.
It was today.
It was today.
Where did I miss that one?
Well, today was the ribbon cutting. Was it also the grand opening?
Yeah, it was the grand opening today at 10 o'clock today.
I missed it.
They wondered if the mayor was coming. I said, "I don't know."
I had it Monday.
Okay, yeah, they opened today.
Okay, well, congratulations to them.
Yeah, it was nice. It was very nice.
It happens to me from time to time. It's embarrassing. I don't think the birthday, I think the birthday is still on the 11th.
That is still on the 11th, Mayor. You're absolutely correct.
And would you, I'll assume you will talk about the birthday.
Yeah, I will be happy to.
And so I am, that's all my business. So if you'd like to start with that.
Yeah, let's start with the Cedar City Birthday Spectacular. It's going to be held on Tuesday, November the 11th. That is Cedar City's founding, and it just happened to also be Veterans Day, but it was our founding long before we had Veterans Day. It'll be at, well, the festivities start at 5:00 PM in the lobby, and it's mostly what we're calling Family Game Night. There's going to be a series of games, and I don't know all what they're planning, but the lobby will be full of activities for families and children. There'll be prizes awarded, and that's from 5:00 to about 7:15. At 7:30, the program begins in the theater, and it will be, the Cedar City Community Band is kind of a backbone of a lot of this. They'll provide a lot of the musical underscoring and background for some of the stories, some of the videos of Cedar City's history, some of the interesting stories. There's a reenactment of a live KSHB radio show with the Foley artists sitting there, crackling the paper to make the fire sounds and do everything, and that'll be a lot of fun. And then we do a large patriotic section to our military, and we have a special section at the very end, kind of talking about democracy and tying in to America 250. I think it's going to be a real, really great production. I hope so. It's coming together pretty well, and that's next Tuesday.
Right.
I wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday, I am not in charge of it, but I understand the storybook Cavalcade Parade is happening this Saturday at 10:00 AM on Main Street, being brought down Main Street again after, what, two-year absence, I believe?
Four.
Oh, four?
It's been a while.
No, no, no.
Maybe it's five.
Two, maybe three.
Oh.
I was involved in it as the mayor's.
Oh, were you? Okay.
Anyway, it's coming back.
The first year, at least.
It's coming back. We had a little scramble, because it used to be at 2:00 in the afternoon, and now they moved it to 10:00, and I was arranging to have all the harvest decorations taken down in the morning, and now we've just flipped it, so we're doing that in the afternoon, because next Wednesday, everyone needs to know, we're closing down Main Street and Center Street to put all the Christmas lights up. So that'll be on the 12th, so there will be some temporary closures of Main Street and Center Street next Wednesday. And then finally, this is just a question, I guess, Mr. Fugel, for you. I'm just following up and see if we've had any more updated information. I brought up some time ago about the possibility of a left-hand turn on 1045 there and Northfield Road. I was out there again today, and there was a car parked very near the curb, and there was lines of cars trying to go turn left, but also right, but there wasn't enough room for either one of them, so it was stacked quite a way. So I just wonder if there's been any update on that.
I don't have an update yet. We're, that's something that's on our list to get a layout put together.
Okay.
So you're talking off of Northfield onto 1045?
Correct. You're turning right onto 1045. A designated right-hand turn.
Yeah, because they kind of share a...
Yeah, well, there's parking right there, and it's not painted, so people car, park almost right up to the street.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that was all. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a little odd one. I had some people on 200 West, not my sister. But the Shakespearean Festival people right there have decided that it was okay to have their music playing from 9:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
Oh.
And it actually, their speakers actually turn and go up 200, 200 West instead of towards their...
Project.
Well, yeah, towards the venue, let's call it there. What they told me was that the city told them that they could do that. So I mentioned to Mr. Bittman, he said, "Bring it up in city council." He was going to check on it a little bit, so I don't know who in the city has said that it was okay, but the people at 200 North or 200 West do not think it's okay.
Is it the volume? Is it the hours?
Volume and the continuation.
I see.
It plays from 9:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and I probably said the wrong thing. I said they're only going to be going for a few more weeks, and that was not a good thing to say. But I do believe that we're probably a little bit out of line. I don't know if who in our, within the city could approach the Shakespearean Festival and say, "Hey, we're kind of out of line here. Let's work together." I know that they're pretty good about working together, so.
Yeah.
So that's my comment for the evening.
Scott might know someone.
Thank you.
I might know someone there, but Mayor, you could talk to someone there. It's up to you. I think they'd be fine with that. I, it's funny you should mention, I heard this yesterday myself.
Oh, really?
It was brought up yesterday in the meeting I was in, so...
I'm sorry.
It was just brought up at a meeting I was in yesterday, so I heard about it yesterday. Not who it was or anything, but it did come up in the conversation, so I think they'd be very amenable to, A, turning it down and then refocusing speakers or whatever they need to do, especially now they're not in...
You wouldn't want to live with it constantly at your house, either.
No, no.
No, so.
If that's going that way, and it's, yeah, I'd get tired of that.
They're going to be, they will be switching it over at some point to Christmas music when they get all their lighting and stuff done next month, this month.
Probably doesn't change anything.
No, no.
So, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Mayor, I just had a couple, you good?
Yep.
Oh, I just had a couple of things. One, I wanted to echo your words, and I think it was a great election season, and, you know, as somebody who's had to go through that a couple of times, I echo what you said, and I think it was done very well by all the candidates, and I appreciate everybody who put their neck out there, and congratulations to those who won. But then also, you know, just so the public knows, it's not our project, but we will most likely, and the citizens of the city will benefit from it. We had the opportunity this week to go tour that new water tank. The Water Conservancy District has finished a new 4 million gallon water tank out west, and we had the opportunity to go actually crawl down inside of it before they disinfect it and clean it out, and it was a good thing, and it will be a good thing for Cedar City and its citizens, because that's where our Area 71 water will end up going and hopefully feed our residents one day, so.
It was amazing to be inside of a water tank.
Yeah, 4 million gallon water tank. It was...
I used to swim in the order of the one.
That explains a few things.
I'm just kidding. That's what happened.
It was cool. I thought she was going to mention that there was a grand piano.
Well, yeah, so they, yeah, they actually craned a grand piano down in there, and they had a men's choir come sing, and it was...
Pretty awesome.
It was, the acoustics in there was, yeah, it was, it was pretty incredible. It was pretty echoey. They said you could whisper, you could stand on one wall and whisper, and a person could be standing on the other end of the tank and the whisper, you could walk, you could hear the whisper go around the tank, and the person standing on the opposite end of the tank could hear you whisper, because it follows the concrete around.
It was fun.
It was. And the mayor was a good sport. It was not easy getting in and out of there.
I went up in, and I went down in.
We had to go down a 2-by-4 ladder of the park.
And I went down to the truck, and so that's with my cane, and thanks to Mr. Wilkie, who assisted me, but we got there.
We made it. It was easy.
Wouldn't get missed that.
Oh.
Fun, fun time. Thank you. Mr. Cox, before we start the other, is there anything that we need to talk about on the well that's...
Are you going to give the update, or you want me to, either way?
Please.
Yeah, I have a couple of items I'd like to bring up. First one being the well. The, the well person, I don't know what the right word term for him is, Luke N. Zalone, is, he has pulled the existing well, the pump out of the well. He is planning to put the new one in, put his pump in tomorrow, but then he's not going to be available this weekend. He has a prior commitment, so he is planning to begin pumping on Monday. And so the, what our plan is, is that we think we should have some results to share with council at next week, next week's meeting regarding that, that well. And at this point in time, there's been no change to estimates regarding costs. You know, what we had presented before is still our current estimates on that. I don't know if there are any other...
The development, the developer did say they would give us until after council next Wednesday, because they're kind of putting it off weather-wise, and then we can have that discussion, and we can have real data to talk about.
Are we talking about 2,300?
Yeah.
Yes.
3,000 North.
3,000, yeah.
Yeah, 2,300 West. Do we have any update, either of you, from the neighboring property owner lady?
No, I still need to track her down.
Okay.
If anyone knows Jane Milner, she's 93 years old and doesn't answer her phone.
Okay.
She used to be a Mackelprane, so if anyone knows any Mackelpranes that could have a connection, that would be great.
Are they from here? Is she from here?
No, they're from Taylorsville now.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's right. I know everybody in Taylor. What's their name?
Well, then track it down. It's Jane Milner.
I actually, that one I might be able to help with.
Jane Mackelprane Milner.
I actually know some of them in Taylorsville, now that you say that.
And then if there are no other questions on that, I did have one other item Mayor would like to bring up.
Please.
So I had a conversation this afternoon with Matt Rhodes from UDOT regarding the median curb project by Maverick. So he just was giving me a status update on that. They are planning to have some traffic control set up tonight and tomorrow night, getting some removal of old striping and painting of new striping done over these next two nights. It'd be, you know, the traffic control should be off before the heavy traffic at the morning commute starts up, both mornings, but that's, they're planning to get that done these next two nights. They will have still some minor work to be completed next week. There's a, we've got some of that median curb on Main Street, there's a place where it comes really close to one of our manholes, and what they did to try to accommodate that, UDOT wasn't satisfied with, so there will be some modification made to that, and there's still some work to do on some of the curb end, end treatments. I did talk quite a bit with him about the layout of the median curb on 200 North. As UDOT has looked at that, their, their conclusion, and the more I think about it, the more I agree with their conclusion, is that the way that curb is laid out currently is probably the most optimal. The problem is that the backup from the left turn is, is going to extend back beyond however long we make that, that left turn bay. And what we're looking at is that the, as that left turn backs into the through lane going eastbound, it doesn't have as significant effect as what backing into the through lane westbound will have, where that's approaching the signal, approaching the two lanes that go through on a relatively low-volume movement compared to the other movements in the intersection. You know, traffic can still spread out to both lanes when they get to the, to the signal, to the stop bar, and so they, they are making some adjustments to the signal timing to try to help make that operate as efficiently as they can, but there is no plan at this point to change the layout of that median curb. Just wanted to give that update. Yeah, they feel like that probably will function the best. That westbound left turn onto 100 West will become much heavier once Maverick opens up, you know, because that gets us to the one and only full movement access into Maverick off of 100 West. So I just wanted to report on that. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me on that.
I just want to make it publicly known that that is a UDOT project.
Yes.
It's not a city project, so we're not the idiots. Anyway, we got, anyway.
Am I okay to ask one, Kent? Did you have discussions with him? Sorry, Steve Nelson. Did you have discussions with him about a second left turn? Because there's no reason for two lanes to go straight, and then you wouldn't have a backup problem if both lanes were turning left.
That was, when they, so UDOT did what they call an ICE study, it stands for Intersection Control Evaluation. They did a big study here several months ago on that intersection, looked at a lot of different options. What they found when they analyzed the option of putting in dual left turns is that because with the dual lefts, you lose that permissive portion of the left turn phasing, you know, where now, you know, you get up there and there's a green arrow, you can get so many cars through, but then during the time that the opposing traffic is, has a green, you know, you have that flashing yellow arrow that you can still make a permissive left turn. What they found in the traffic analysis was losing the permissive left turns during the opposing through hurt the intersection operation more than what the second left turn helped it.
So what you're saying is if you're going to do a second left-hand turn, it has to be arrows only, it has to be green arrows only.
It has to be green arrows only.
You can't have both sitting there, and when there's an opening, go for it.
There are some jurisdictions in the country who do operate some permissive dual lefts.
Whoa.
It's highly unusual. Most jurisdictions don't. There used to be one that I was aware of in downtown Salt Lake that is no longer operating that way. Yeah, they're, that's generally considered to not be a real safe operation, and so with dual left turns, they end up being, you know, the protected left only with the green arrow.
So is the, is he open, because the reality, in my opinion, even if they change those lights, is if that continues to back up to pass First West, and, and you have nobody then in that, that first through lane, then that says the study to me is not valid, because if you have two that line up and can actually both get through the light, that's better than having to back up through to Second West, and...
Well, and the reality is it backs up through the First West today during those peak times.
Well, that's...
It already, it already does, and when it backs up that way, that completely blocks off the westbound left turn onto First West, which will now be available with the median curb. So I think it's actually an improvement all the way around that configuration of the median curb.
Yeah, I'm not arguing the median curb. I'm still arguing that I don't think that, that long-term, we'll see if he changes that timing on the light, but if you can stack two lanes of car, or one and a half lanes of cars, because you have a full lane and then that partial median turn lane, that's more cars that can actually get out of the way rather than backing up to Second West.
You know, with the number of cars that you can clear out on the protected portion of that left turn with the green arrow, that helps those cars back behind to get into that second through lane. I think it's going to, I think that UDOT is right in their analysis of that. I think we're doing the right thing to keep moving forward with the way that is set up currently.
Mr. Fugel and Mr. Nelson, I want you to know that I had a conversation with Matt Rhodes as well, and what he told me and what he left with me is, you're absolutely right, Kent, this is where they're going to leave it for now. But he was very open to further looking at it after it opens and is functioning fully with the station going, to see if they might make adjustments after that time, because I said, "You're going to have problems."
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Mayor, I did forget one thing. I just wanted to find out if it was okay with council and with you, Mayor, that I would like to have the swearing-in of the new youth city council on Wednesday, November the 19th. I've interviewed all of the candidates. I started contacting them today. Some of them did not leave their cell phones or emails on their application, so it's a little difficult now to get ahold of a few of them, but I think I'll get to the principals, and we'll get to the bottom of that, but I want to make sure that was okay to put that on the agenda for the 19th of November.
I think it's fine.
Pardon?
I see.
Five-thirty.
There'll be council start.
City council.
City council.
At the regular time of city council on the 19th. And I've, I've told all the students this who have made application and I've told them to make sure their parents are aware of it, so if they want to come, they can come on that evening.
Thank you. Okay, staff, any other business? Thank you. Public? Mr. Schmidt?
Phil Schmidt. A little while ago, we talked about the fire hydrant that's at the airport that's been broke. Anyway, we worked with the city and the airport. The shaft coming out of the hydrant was bent, the coupling in the bottom was broke. We were able to just take off the top. The city had the parts to replace it. We put it back together and we saved the city about $11,000. So that hydrant is now totally functioning.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll buy you dinner.
Everybody helped and it's all, it's good.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Scotty Harville with the American Legion. I'm the new post adjutant and I wanted to just say, on behalf of all the members of our post, we thank you for your service and the things that you do for the American Legion and the veterans in town. Wanted to bring you up your note. Remember, we have a, a, a Legion memorial being taken place at 10:00 AM at the Veterans Park that, for the, at 10:00 AM at the Vietnam Memorial. And then, of course, our Monday meetings and, and Phil knows how to get ahold of me if you have any questions or anything for the Legion and, and again, I thank you.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Harville, just so you know, we're also doing Reefs Across America on December 13th.
We'll be there for also. The Legion, we're aware of that on the East of America, anything that can help you also with your birthday celebration, we'll be working with you, together, our veterans, and we'll be working on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll begin the agenda. First of all, consider appointment of Keith Naylor to the Board of Adjustments. I'm pleased to, to offer a release to Mr. Terry Hermanson, who's been served for a couple of years on the board. He's moved, I think he went on a mission, I think is what he did. Does anybody know that? Steve?
I don't think he, I don't think he's left yet because he's scheduled to sing in my...
He was there.
Program next Tuesday.
I see. Hasn't left yet, but he has a call. So he'll be released and I've asked Mr. Keith Naylor to take his place on the board. And Keith is here this evening with his wife and his daughter and I'd like you to come forward and, and this is your claim to fame, you're on television, sure, smile.
Cut the camera.
There you go. And tell us about yourself and...
Well, Mayor, thank you and council. Good evening. Yes, Keith Naylor. By way of background, I currently am employed by Parwin City. I'm the Assistant Zoning Administrator and have recently become the building inspector out there as we've transitioned away from the county. So I deal in administrative land use and application of municipal code and state law daily, so I feel that my background is well-suited for serving on this board and I look forward to the opportunity to serve.
He does live in Cedar City.
I do live in Cedar City, sorry.
That was gonna be my question.
The commute gives me time to decompress or ramp up, whichever I need.
Unless there's a big snowstorm, then it's the opposite.
Exactly.
Well, good.
Any questions?
You from here, born and raised?
I'm not. I've lived here since 2011.
Oh, okay.
Quite a while.
Longer than me.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your service and being willing to work with the city.
Absolutely.
Would you come and just greet, shake hands with these council members and staff?
Welcome to work.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was my first.
Yeah, you just do all this.
Oh, really?
Or you gotta come back next week when they vote. You don't want to.
And then the other one that you'll have to fill there, I guess, our new mayor will just do that after the first of the year.
Well, yeah, he's...
Because he'll be off of there. He's on there, so...
Can't. But he can, he can, he can spill it anytime he wants.
Blah.
I'm kind of tired of filling committee assignments. There's a lot of, a lot of committees.
There are a lot of, mhm.
I don't, I, you know, you call your friends, but then someday you run out of friends.
So, can we put that on consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two, staff consideration, a change order, consider a change order for the Canyon View Detention Pond Landscape Restoration Project. Mr. Johnson?
I think Kent could probably pull it up, but just to, so this project's done, we did a lot of it in-house. The landscaping portion, we contracted out and our estimates on sod were a little off. That was the major item, so ended up going over. The other, we came under budget on a, our other storm drain project on 1600 North, so we're able to pull the funds from that.
I'm sorry, you said we came in under budget.
On that other project, so that's where this is be funded from.
So the total is the 9,029?
Uh, no. We have 775 and then we'll pull the 16 over from 1600. So that, the total funds are 791 and then our expenses are 782, so that leaves 9,000 positive.
Still good.
So overall, we're actually under budget, between the two combined?
Yeah, between the two.
Okay. Well, that's good.
We did a lot of this work ourselves.
Yeah, saved, probably saved a million dollars doing it.
And because this is more than 5%, is that why we even have to know about it? Isn't that the rule, Randall?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, are we actually voting on something next week?
From one, one project to another.
You are voting.
Yeah, we also, I mean, we are modifying the budget, not tonight, but to move the money from one project to the other.
Okay, yeah. That makes sense, okay.
Well, I will say, the project looks very good. I think they did a great job. I mean, I guess the proof will be in the pudding when we get a big storm.
I think sod was the right answer.
Yeah.
Because it looks, I mean, it already looks...
Yeah.
Great. So, yeah.
Yeah, and we owe a lot of thanks to our street division for the work that they did on that.
They did a lot.
They played major contractor out there. I don't know that that's what they wanted to do, but they did it and it saved us quite a bit.
Can we talk it in hundreds, thousands? Save quite a bit?
Probably. I'm not sure.
That's great.
As this is a change order, can we put this on consent?
Yes.
Well, I would move, we put this on consent for next week.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I mean, yeah, if you take out a 20% general contractor fee, that alone would be...
Item number three. If I could, I was just gonna say, of course, the, that budget part of it will be finalized with what Terry's going to bring to you next week.
Yeah, sure. But we're agreeing to the concept of the change order and allowing it to move forward, yeah.
Before you count the pennies, I think it was intended from the very beginning that the, that our street department was gonna do this job and we priced it accordingly, so...
Yeah.
Don't spend the excess.
Well, good.
Thank you. Item number three, consider the restoration of sick leave for Zach Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good evening. Darren Adams with the Police Department. As you can see in your packet, I've laid out the, the information there. I'll go over that now. On July 8th of this year, there was a stolen vehicle out of St. George that proceeded south, or northbound on Interstate 15. Washington County deputies and Highway Patrol initiated a pursuit initially and then as it left Washington County, Washington County deputies peeled off, troopers pursued and then discontinued. Helicopter was launched, which tracked the vehicle all the way from about the Walmart Distribution Center, all the way up to Iron County. UHP re-engaged at that time and spiked the vehicle just there at the, I think it was the 600 South Overpass is where that vehicle was spiked. Sergeant Adams happened to be in the area responding to a different call. He was the task force commander at the time, so unmarked and, and on duty. The vehicle became disabled and stopped just east, or excuse me, just west of the SUU football stadium area where they've just redone all the track and field stuff. And, and so it stopped there, there were no other units close. Sergeant Adams was there in the median, turned, pulled up behind the individual who then fled the vehicle with a backpack in his hand, started to run northbound. He tripped and fell. Sergeant Adams and another officer got to him quickly and attempted to take him into custody. During that time, he was, had his hands concealed underneath him. They were worried about what might be in the bag, why he needed to, to take that bag with him when he fled and what could be possessed inside the bag.
This was all on I-15 and...
Correct. Right in the, right off the median there by the right-of-way fence. And so force was used to try to get him to comply and to remove his hands out from under himself. He did not do that. At one point, Sergeant Adams delivered a distraction strike to try to get him to pull those arms out, but as he did, the suspect turned and Zach hit him in the back of the head, thereby breaking his hand. They ultimately were able to successfully take him into custody without incident at that time and, and resolve the issue. So, just here outlining policy eight point, 12.6, which allows for an employee to request and the city to grant up to full restoration of sick leave and under this case, while affecting an arrest of a combative or resistant subject or an assault under riot conditions. So Sergeant Adams was off for a couple of days after. They brought him back to light duty at the beginning of the next week, so six days later, including the weekend, he worked and then went out for surgery and was off for healing and then we brought him right back as soon as he could work in a light-duty condition.
So I'm assuming the, the paid time off was used while the investigation happened and then that's why he's now, so to make sure he had coverage while he was on.
Yes, yes.
So he used it at first.
Yeah, so with workers' comp, workers' comp pays a portion, as you know, but then an employee has to use part of their sick leave to make them whole. And so he was off for a few weeks before, I mean, initially and then during the surgery. Like I said, we tried to get him back to work in a light-duty capacity as soon as we possibly could and the doctor would release him to do so. So these are the hours that were used.
But it looks like we're talking about, about six days worth, six working days.
Correct.
Forty-hour week and then additional 10 and a half hours.
Yes.
Because 50.5 is the total, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I assume this has been discussed with the HR department?
Yes.
Do they have any recommendations or any thoughts on this or they want us to strictly come to council?
Yeah, so, so I have not done this before. There was one officer that I was involved with that we had done this with and that was